This conference will now be recorded.
I think it's COPO 23, isn't it?
Something like that.
Now everybody knows. Okay. It's like we got counsel here, so I will go ahead and open up this meeting at 5:36. Are we recording? Yes, we are recording. Okay, so I'll do a quick roll call. I will call for the people that are remote first, Councilor Pogwitz.
Tim, yes.
Counselor Valisis?
Tim here.
Ann, yes.
Counselor Rask?
Here.
Counselor Webb?
Webb, present.
Counselor Burns?
Burns here.
And Counselor Tidy?
Present.
All right, I think that's everybody, so I can tell Joseph when he returns. Um, okay, so we'll start with the pledge. Maybe I can get my brain together by right now.
Any better that month? Uh, it was sloppy last month.
Um, okay, so just additions to the agendas down at number four, but I'm going to bump that up. Ann, could you clarify the those last minute additions that we had for the job description?
Yeah, well, we have, I think we have two items, and I don't know what agenda you guys have. You have a slightly different one in front of you, but I think we need to add two items. We need to adopt the job description as 7C. And we have to add a resolution to give mayor the authority to complete the DEQ loan, and so that could probably also go under old business. Uh, either as 7D maybe, or early on, just to get it over with.
Um.
And then one other quick request, Pat, I had is I believe that our Civil West engineer Tina is there tonight to be available to answer questions about the brick grant. And that's way down in new business number 8C, so I was wondering if there's any appetite to move that up a bit so she doesn't have to stay quite so long.
Okay, uh, so we could. It's resubmital, so it's kind of new business. Do you want to move that up to 7E?
Yeah.
For the brick grants.
Won't sell that old business?
Well, I pulled it out because it's a resubmital. We can. It's it's new enough. Hmm, 7C. Okay, so that I think is the additions. Um. So presentations to councilor citizens, we don't have any today. Uh, the consent calendar, this is just for applications. These are coming from me. I reviewed all of them. Um, and they all look good. Carol Lawton for emergency management. I know she's on the fire department, and Lori Proudie and Nancy are both longtime residents, so I would entertain a motion.
So moved. Second.
All right, any discussion? Okay, I'm going to call for the vote to appoint Carol Lawton to emergency management, Lori Proudie to the TLT committee, and Nancy Fraser to the TLT committee. Counselor? Counselor Valisis?
Yes.
Pogwitz?
Tim, yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Tidy?
Yes.
Rask?
Yes.
Webb?
Webb, yes.
Okay, we already covered additions. Okay, now we're going to move on to citizen concerns. Uh, please state your name and address and only speak for three minutes, and I'll go see if there's a list. Anybody? You don't have to be on the list, it's just. Okay, and only counselors online, so we're going to go, is there anybody online that I'm missing that wants to speak? I don't think so. And we are also, I didn't put this on the changes to the agenda, but because we are, this is a nonregular meeting, we're crossing out the liaison reports, so that'll cut about three hours off the meeting. Um, okay, so we will go ahead and move right into, let's see, the executive sessions are at the end, so yeah, old business. Uh, and that's 7A, job vacancies discussion. Um, we had appointed a committee for that last month. Ann and Tim have been talking about it, so I think I'm just going to hand that over to Ann, if you don't mind.
Nope, that's fine, and I just want to tell you guys all, I'm really sorry to not be there in person, but I'm recovering from COVID, and my husband has it now, so I didn't want to infect every, risk giving, bringing it to people, but um, anyway. So, uh, I just wanted, the first part of the job vacancies discussion is just, uh, there's a little bit of an update on the interim hire, then we need to talk about, um, move on from there. So quickly, Gary Milliman was not available. I reached out to one prospective interim administrator who was not available until Thanksgiving, but by the time around, we got around there, that person didn't get back to me. And it seemed there was sort of a feeling amongst the managers and Pat that maybe we should really just focus on hiring the right person now, and really put our emphasis and energy into that, that would be just as well. Um, because of course there'd be a lot of effort to put into bringing any new person up to speed. And as I dug in the hiring process, I learned that Lakeside just hired, or was hiring, um, an administrator, and they were, they had some good candidates and were willing to share them with us, and um, I just had lots of people giving me ideas and prospects and places to advertise and all that, so I had some cautious optimism that we could just push forward. Um, and um, I'll just mention that Sharon at CIS kind of thought that was a good idea too. So, that's, I think, like, the first chapter of the update is just that that's kind of where we're at with that, and Pat, I don't know if you want to say anything more about that before I move on, or if people have any, if we want to just.
No, just everybody, everybody understood that that we're not looking for an interim, but we kind of made the call to push to get this application done and get the main um, out while we're still getting calls and talking with interim, so everybody square on that? Okay.
And what if it takes months to find somebody, the perfect person, because we don't want to hire the wrong person again?
Right, and that's where the interim comes in, and we're not saying we're not looking for an interim or anything like that, just that get this ball rolling and then, because we kind of want to, when we do get an interim, make sure that we have the focus on getting the replacement and, you know, so. Um, but that does not cut out the interim discussion or pursuit whatsoever.
So we're advertising for an interim right now.
We are seeking an interim right now. Well, well, but we did, Gary did put it out on his websites, so, so we are advertising, not in the papers right now, um, and it is not on the website.
So it seems to me like we should do that. Okay, I mean, I'm just saying, we don't have to hire anybody, but.
Yep.
I can see that if we were to get somebody in a couple of months, hiring an interim, interim, by the time they got on board, they'd be out. So it'd take a lot of interim staff to educate them, and they're already being taxed, so just depends on who the interim might be. They really need to be good.
But there's no, nothing's, it's not going to hurt anything for advertising that.
No, and because that.
It doesn't mean that we have to.
It could be the same ad too. It could be interim and permanent or something.
Right.
Right?
And it could, could lead to a permanent.
Yeah, perhaps, that would be the way to do it.
Okay, so that's kind of the update on that. Does anybody have any, well, I mean, that's what we've been rolling, like, we'll get the interim on there, hammer it out a little bit more, and we are still talking with some people. I'll follow up with a person tomorrow.
Just hire slow, man. Hire slow and fire fast.
That's, that's why, yeah, that's why it's like, get the, get the full-time job thing rolling, get that process, so we'll have it hammered out, and then cross our fingers, flip a coin, and.
It seems to me like when you end up with a pool of applicants that is so shallow that it's just slick on the floor, that you need to go back out. You don't just take the slick off.
Absolutely, Brett, you know, I have a whole bunch of other stuff I want to tell you guys, so, about the process, because um, it's actually like, very specific. So, why don't I just keep moving on, because.
Hold on one second. Uh, hold on one second. Counselor Rask has a question before we move on.
I was curious about where we're advertising.
Well, no.
That's part of the process discussion. I don't know if you guys have had a chance to, uh, so may I continue on, and we'll get to that?
Yes.
Okay, so as you remember, you appointed the committee to work on this. Uh, we started out with the idea of having two positions, um, but as I did the research into the positions, um, I found that most small cities our size do not have two positions of city administrator and finance director. Uh, Lakeside, Gold Beach, Banden, Shady Cove, Yonkalla, all have like, city administrators that have the skill to be the chief budget officer, and then if need be, they kind of hire, um, finance staff under them, or outsource some of the finance processes, and they establish internal safeguards. Um, and I came to realize this was also actually important, because the administrator really knows and understands the budget thoroughly. Um, so anyway, that happened. Then I also learned that in our charter, um, you know, we, as a city council, we have the authority to hire a city administrator. That's like our biggest and most important job. Um, and um, as I started learning about how involved the hiring process is, it just kind of was clear to me that this position is the key to everything else, and that's kind of where we have to start. It's, um, so anyway, that's, came to that conclusion, and shared that with Tim, and we, uh, jointly worked to develop a job description announcement. Um, I did a lot of research on the process with LOC and CIS, and uh, came up with ideas for where to advertise and all sorts of things. So the key things we do, need to do tonight are to look at that process and to adopt the job description. So, why don't we look at the job, uh, hiring process? And the one that you should be looking at, I hope you had a chance to look at this ahead of time, is the one that says December 6th to January 5th. There may have been an earlier version that got out in the early packet, but um, that's the one we're working with now, December 6th to January 5th. So this is a proposed process. It's based on what LOC recommends and what Sharon at CIS recommended. Basically, we start, it's a little bit better to start with December 5th, where we are, I would say we should, I should have changed the order on that. Um, you can see basically, we adopt the hiring process, we adopt the city job description, and then what happens is we can discuss where, uh, we want to advertise and how, uh, how much we want to spend on that. I have put a list at the top there of all the places where I've been recommended so far. There's actually some other sites that I've been recommended, also city manager sites in Washington and California. Um, and so we can decide if we want, what our budget might be for paid advertisements, if we want to do further. Um. Ultimately, you'll see here, the mayor should appoint a subcommittee of counselors to receive the the job applications resumes, and then basically, the reason the job description is so important is that we have to come up with a scoring sheet. Sharon will help us to do this, so that we score all of the applicants based on whether they meet, how they meet our job description criteria. So the job description kind of ends up being, um, kind of the key to everything. It's the key to how we get through this process and be very fair, and then ultimately, when we hire the person, it helps us to also keep that, um, hold that person accountable for, for doing the job. So then, the way I have it outlined here, um, we basically hold the job open for a month till early January. This can be changed if you guys want to do it any different. This is a proposal. Um, and then we, um, screen them, and then we, whoever is on the subcommittee that screens, uh, will pick the top two or three candidates for interviews. At that point, that committee will, um, up, will schedule an interview day, and the mayor can appoint two interview panels that are made up of staff, managers and citizens. Yes, did you, you have a question? I'm sorry, I'm, it's hard for me to hear. Okay, I'm going to keep going till I get to the end, and then you guys, and I don't mean to overdo this. Um, basically, we have a day where we do the interviews, we do it in panels, and then there will be a public interview with city council, all of us doing the interview of the top candidates in public, open meeting. Then we go into an executive session and can make our decision on who we want to give a conditional offer to. And the conditional offer will be dependent on their ability to pass a background check. And at that point, we do a background check, and um, presumably, the council will give the authority to the mayor and, um, a council, other council member, council president to, to, you know, make the offer and eventually to negotiate with the candidate. So that's basically the overview. All the details are here. Does anybody have any questions or ideas or thoughts?
Great. Yeah, really great, Ann.
Thank you.
So I would entertain a motion to adopt this hiring process with the dates amended?
So moved.
Any discussion on that, Ann, or anyone you want to add, anything?
I would. I would just say, if you guys want to, by consensus, come up with a ballpark figure of how much money you want to spend on advertising, and if there is a further discussion of that in particular, to me, it sounds like there's lots of networks where we can, um, either post them for free, or even some of these networks, they charge like 20 bucks. I mean, it's not that much, but if we had maybe a budget of $300 or something, I don't know. I think the local newspapers will be more, um, a lot more, but um, anyway. Thoughts on that stuff?
If we were to advertise for all of the four local papers, I think it's around 750 bucks.
What's our budget? What's the budget say about advertising? Looking for it here.
I don't know if it's going to be in the amended one, because that's water.
Planning has a $500 budget for advertising. That won't be mixed up with that, right?
You know, we don't have a budget for this, basically, so I think it's going to be yet another one of these things where we're going to be scrimping and saving, so my, my own thought would be to go with the cheapo things, and, you know, the thing that I was so, I got to tell you guys, I was actually really excited, and maybe I'm like too Pollyanna-ish, but, you know, Gary is willing to put it out on his LinkedIn account, which is massive, and a whole bunch of other people gave me these other links and said they'd share it, and had, so, like, other city managers. So I think, um, I think we could start with that, you know, and, and see how we do, and, uh, take a leap and do our best, and if it doesn't work, then, you know, we go to a plan B. Does that?
And Greg mentioned, we're not paying an administrator right now, so there could be.
We have, we have some free money for this last month. We haven't paid administrators.
And if we start with the freebies, somebody might say, hey, you know, if you throw $500 here, that would be a, you know, there might be some recommendation.
Isn't there a contingency down on the bottom of that?
Why, why are we not, why, why do we not have a line item for advertising in our budget?
Is that just the, is that the whole budget or just the water?
I don't know, I'm going through. This is the proposed, that's the proposed budget, right?
I think we should overload with advertising. I think that, um, we shouldn't hold back, and we should put it out there as much as possible, and you never know who we should, will get. And I think limiting the scope of where the advertising goes limits the scope of who might apply.
So maybe we should.
I agree.
Maybe we should go with the free stuff first, and then at our meeting on the 21st, we could maybe come back with the prices for the advertising and shake the trees to see what line item it would come out of, because I think contingency will work, but.
Could we just set an amount and then let, um, that committee decide what they think the best way to spend it is?
Yeah.
I would suggest 1,000.
That's not even very much.
I think that we should advertise in some of the I-5 papers.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think it's very much, a thousand, I think it's too low.
It's too low.
Let's go higher.
Yeah, so. A month's worth of salary for the city admin, in a sense, we haven't paid, we haven't paid for a month of city admin. So why don't we, we don't have to use all of that money, in a sense, but, you know, 2,000 to 3,000 to really get it out there.
Like 2,500.
We're trying to, we're trying to attract some people.
Right. So I, I think we should do 2,500 a month as a budget.
I think that we're supposed to have a line item for advertising, and have we not advertised all of 2023?
No.
We haven't had anything advertised for.
I'm just, I'm not seeing it. I'm looking, but.
It's not something we do very often.
But we budget for it, we should be budgeting for it.
But I mean, if we don't never spend any money on it, that's why it's not a line item.
There's none in there.
Well, regardless, we can't amend the budget at this point, so we want to allocate some funds.
Well, we got budget.
So I would move that we allocate $2,500 for advertising for the position.
We got 500.
The administrator.
Yeah, that's in the planning.
500 in this supplemental budget for advertising.
Planning, that's in planning.
This is general fund, nondepartmental.
I want to throw in another thing there.
Just do it.
May I say one other thing about this? Um, Perry, I totally hear you and am into that. Uh, I'm going to say another couple of things about money, though, like, one city told me they used Indeed, but they figured out a way to do it kind of for free, you know, like, they posted it on Indeed, but then they had people contact them separately, or there's a lot of little, I mean, I kind of heard about some hacks, and the other piece of this, which I, I don't think I would necessarily be able to implement, but, um, the other piece of this is we have, and we'll get to this with the job description, so maybe, you know, all of this is a piece, so maybe we want to talk about this, um, you know, or it's all like, kind of tied together. We know, or we've said, I hear, I've heard this body say, we need somebody who's competent and experienced, and the kind of person that we want is somebody who is in these fields of management of cities and government, um, city managers, you know, and so those people that are the professionals are going to be on these lists that I've talked about. So we don't get like, the local retired person who may be it, but you would get the local retired person who's like a Gary Milliman, who's still active in the field, because they're really engaged. Um, there's only one of him, of course, but, you know what I'm saying, those professional organizations are actually really kind of like the place to look.
And, and one thing, just to pump the brakes a little bit, uh, there is a motion in a second on the table to accept this hiring process, and I think that we can make that decision and then come out of that and decide what we want to spend on the advertising, or how we, we're going to do that. So I'm going to go ahead and circle back, and I'm going to ask for the vote to accept this hiring process, and I'll touch on that. Um, money part. So Counselor Pogwitz?
Tim, yes.
Oh, you are there. Uh, Counselor Valisis?
Yes.
Tidy?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Webb?
Webb, yes.
Rask?
Yes.
Okay, so that's done. Thank you so much for working on that hiring process, Ann, um, and now, uh, let's, like, we got 500 for advertising. Um.
I made a.
We got no contingency.
It's got to come from someplace. I, oh.
I made a motion for $2,500.
Where'd that come from? Where'd it come from, Perry?
Well, I.
She made a motion, so we either get a second, or dies, and then we can discuss.
Okay, so I'll second the motion to, um.
For discussion.
Come up with, yeah, to, to come up with 25, to, to make that available. I think that, how we don't have, how we didn't advertise for all the things that we usually advertise for.
We haven't been advertising at all.
I know.
On council, we haven't advertised for.
I know, I, I get that.
And there's actually zero in this supplemental budget for advertising.
It's not, that's just not the way you do it. I, I hope that we can, when we do our budgeting this year, let's think about that a little bit more and, um.
Okay.
At this point, we can take it from this hour.
We took 3,900 out of contingencies, but there's still, oh no, that's public safety, damn it.
Can we, like.
The supplemental budget is just, I think, isn't it just a very specific fix that David's asked us for?
That was, yeah, that was for David to, to.
It is, but I'm, I'm just looking through the funds here.
It covers all of the budgeted amounts.
Is that the? I mean.
Are we able to take it out of, like, salaries? I mean, would that make, is that a, um?
I don't. I don't. I don't know.
So you guys, not to open up another can of worms, but I got to tell you, as Tim and I have been trying to talk about the job description, the next thing, and figure out how much money we have to offer. You know, we are really, we're like, really scraping at the bottom of the barrel here, is what we've been told by David. I mean, we're, we are not, we don't have money to, uh, it's tight, so anyway.
I'd like to reiterate on that. So, can you hear me?
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead, Tim.
So, uh, we've been in communication with David, and yes, uh, we have been in communication with David as well, and, uh, we've had this warning a couple of months ago, and it's, it's been reconvened to us that, uh, we, we really don't have a whole lot of money, and we really, it's going to be difficult to, to have the money to even perhaps pay a city administrator in the foreseeable future, so I want to be careful with what I say, but I'm here to tell you that we need to be thinking that we don't have the money.
And that, we'll get, we can get to the.
Does that make any sense?
Of, of money when we get to the job description, I think, too. Yeah, Tim.
Okay.
It looks like you should be able to use city administrator wages for advertising for a city administrator, but it's just not quite right.
Sort of in the same category, but.
I'm sure there's, there's budget law that dictates whether that's, I'm sure David could tell us that real easily. Probably shouldn't waste too much time pondering it. I don't think it's going to jump out at us, but we should, I think we should fund it as, as healthily as we can.
Can we, could we withdraw our motions and make a motion to put X amount of money into advertising barring, you know, confirmation by Dave Johnson?
That there's a place, place to.
Yes, but why would you have to withdraw your previous motion?
Oh, we just amended.
Didn't you just make the motion to adopt your job description?
Yes, that one's done.
Yeah.
And then there was.
Process.
But then there was a motion to, uh, for, to expend 25, up to 2,500 on advertising, and it was seconded for discussion.
Condition that motion upon, um, confirmation with finance funds are available.
And can be distributed properly. Okay, so would you like to make that amendment?
Oh, sure, can you say it one more time?
Just so moved.
Your motion is conditioned upon, uh, the finance department finding those funds and making them available for that purpose.
So I move that we spend 25, up to 2,500 on advertising for the city administrator position subject to, um, the finance director approving it in the budget.
Sure.
Do you want to amend your second, Counselor Webb?
I'll go with that.
Okay, any other discussion on that? Hearing that, I'll call for the question. Counselor Burns?
Yes.
Tidy?
Yes.
Pogwitz?
Yes.
Pogwitz? Uh, Counselor Valisis?
Tim, yes.
Yes.
Got it.
And yes.
So that, and Ann said yes too, and then councillor Rask.
Yes.
And councillor Webb.
Webb, yes.
Cool. Okay, now we are moving on to seven C. That was an addition and that's gonna be adopting the job description. Carry on, Ann.
Okay, so the, the job description part of this is, um, you know, so a couple, was it a couple of meetings ago? Or at the last meeting, we had a job description discussion and then council was a little bit like, are we, should we adopt this or not? Or, you know, and so we have this job description, we came up with it. I explained that it's the key part of the whole process. And I've, uh, I started with what I had and Tim and I, you know, added some, we discussed it and made some adjustments. Added a few things from some other, uh, job descriptions of councillors. And so you guys get to decide if there's anything else to add or amend.
I got to read it more than you guys, I think.
It, it looked good to me.
I read it, it was great.
I move we accept the, um, city administrator job description as presented.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
I would add, I have one quick thing, which is Sharon Harris. She really liked this. She had one thing to add after this, which is she thought we might want to add. A collective bargaining to it. Um, again, this is the idea where if we develop points of things that we think are gonna like make somebody a valuable, um, person for us. That's a skill that, you know, if we had had, that is a valuable skill for a city administrator to have. So that's one idea. But that's the only addition I would.
But not a requirement, correct?
Yeah, that's kind of like, uh, essential duties. Well, yeah, maybe that's, uh, yeah, essential duties and responsibilities. I guess you're right. That is a little, that's more like what we would like to see. She, uh, so anyway. So maybe let's just leave it as it is, forget that.
Any other discussion? Ann's the only one that questioned her own work, so I think this should go pretty good. Uh councillor Webb.
Web, yes.
Councillor Heidi. Councillor Burns.
Burns, yes.
Councillor Rask.
Yes.
Councillor Velisis.
Yes.
And councillor Pogwits.
Tim, yes.
Okay. We're just cruising through tonight. Knock on wood, I shouldn't have said that. Uh, seven D, authorize the DEQ loan agreement. Uh, this is basically signatory, um, it, it, uh, it basically needs to be put in my name now. So we can sign off on it. Um, Ann, is there more to it than that?
Nope, that's it. It's exactly the same thing, uh, where you said city administrator, it now says, um, mayor. And we just found out about this yesterday, so, um, that we need to change it. So hopefully we can get, get this done.
And this is the document that was presented before.
Move to adopt the resolution twenty twenty three dash thirty four, uh, r- resolution approving loan agreement. The DEQ to acquire watershed property and partially re- rehabilitate same, authorizing the mayor of the city, city of Port Orford to execute as necessary.
Any discussion on that? Okay, called for the vote councillor Pogwits.
Tim, yes.
Councillor Heidi.
Yes.
Councillor Velisis.
Yes.
Councillor Rask.
Yes.
Councillor Burns.
Yes.
Councillor Webb.
Webb, yes.
Okay, now we are moving on to the brick grant. Ann has also been working hard on this with, uh. With the engineers, uh, who we luckily have here tonight. Um, and we've been talking about narrowing it down. Narrowing the scope down to shovel-ready projects, um, because as you know, we didn't score well on our brick grant. But we do have a chance to, to reissue it. Um, Tina, if you want to come up, I'm sure we'll have some questions for you. And Ann, make me sound smarter than I do, please.
Uh, you, you pretty much covered it. I think the only thing would be to say was that last fall, we did invest considerable amounts of resources. And time in submitting this grant. And even though we failed, we got some really helpful constructive feedback. And, um, over the past six weeks, you know, with the interim, uh, with Mr. Huddle and then, uh, with the engineer, with Civil West. We've met and we've talked about this and kind of tried to figure out some ways we can move forward. And, um, I believe at the last meeting, you'll recall, we brought the information to you that Civil West is a grant writing. Um, has grant writing capabilities that combines their knowledge and engineering. It's kind of like a one-stop shop. So we don't have to kind of integrate and they put together a, a proposal for us, um, that is in your packet. So that's our, our job tonight is to figure out if we can support this proposal, um, a- and move forward with it. So that's all I have to say.
I got an easy one for you right off the bat, Tina. Uh, on the third page, items four and five under task descriptions. It says seventy five percent review, incorporate comments, and then number five is a hundred percent, but they're the same price across the board. So what, what does that?
That, that's just a meeting for us to get together with you at those stages.
Oh, okay, understood. Okay, three quarters of the way through and at the end of it.
Exactly. So it's basically a, a, maybe a, I don't remember how many hours I put in there, but it's, it's a meeting.
Gotcha. So they're both a hundred percent meetings, just at different times.
Right.
Got it. Okay, and so if I'm looking at this correct, the whole kit and caboodles, around fourteen thousand. And this, you know, and this is, this is kind of putting the, the cherry on top of the shovel-ready projects that we have. And I mean, fourteen thousand is fourteen thousand and, and we are a bit away, but we, it will also help us in the future with other grants. That we could pursue having those shovel-ready projects, so, um, so luckily it's up to you guys unless you split on it.
And we appreciate the discounts.
Yeah, I think that's a great thing to point out with, or Gary.
Can't call him that in a meeting.
I know, I'm sorry.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the, um, agreement with Civil West Engineering.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that?
Where are we getting money for this?
Well, we did, we did budget for engineering this year, so we will actually probably be under on that line item because we budgeted quite a bit for it. Um, and even though we weren't successful with the ask, we did pay, you know, to get to the point we're at. And I, it's hard for me to not promote this because we're so far along and I think there's merit to this, even if we don't. Get this second round of brick grant, which I'm not gonna hold my breath on, but I'm negative when it comes to grants. Tim, did you have your hand raised?
No, I did not.
I saw you wave it.
Flying.
I just add, I talked to David about this today, about where's money gonna come from, and he said, oh yeah, engineering, and he thought it was a good, a good investment for us. And, um, you know, this time, basically, I've heard this council talk a lot about the need to hire grant writers. Uh, this time we're, this grant is a very technical grant. It's not like there's some that we might be able to do with volunteers. Or that even individuals like us could help with. This is a technical one. And so to me, it makes me feel really good that we're gonna hire a professional organization to help us. And I think that will really increase our likelihood of success. And I have heard this council talk about wanting to do that a lot before, so just want to underscore that too.
Yep, I agree. Okay, guys, any discussion? Calling for the vote then councillor Burns.
Yes.
Councillor Rask.
Yes.
No.
Councillor Web.
Yes.
Councillor Velisis.
Yes.
And councillor Pogwits.
Tim, yes.
Okay, motion passes.
We, we talked about this a few months back, was getting s- some projects shovel-ready, right?
Yeah, and we, and so what, basically, uh, well, I guess it's a done deal now, but yeah, it was like.
Seven hundred thousand dollars or something that we voted to spend. And we didn't even have it.
Right. And that's so we put a stop on things. We're like, we're gonna pump the brakes and circle back and this is the circle back. Uh, Civil West came back to us with the, I think it was five shovel-ready projects, maybe six. So that's what we're focusing on and, and, uh, yeah, they're gonna fix all of our problems, right Tina? You, you have any questions for us on this or anything else since you're here? I hate that you drove all the way down here for.
No, no, no. Uh, I don't have any questions. Thanks for having me here today. I.
Absolutely.
More involved and.
Oh, you will, don't worry. Yeah.
Oh, I live Port Orford, so.
Good, you should move here. We need some engineer.
For a little while when I first moved to the coast and I fell in love, but my house is abandoned.
Ah, well, we won't talk about that then.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you so much.
All right. Oh, this is my agenda for my. Port meeting I had a while ago, so I'm gonna go ahead and get away from that. Oh, here we go. This is the one I need. All right. So that was seventeen, that was the brick grant. You guys are killing it tonight. Uh, new business eight A, resolution twenty twenty two dash thirty three. It is the supplemental budget. And this is to move money around to get the silt on the, the. The humus pond cleaned out for the sewage plant.
I would move to do that number.
Twenty twenty three thirty three.
Move to, uh. There we go. Page seven.
Six.
D A B C, I got three As. I moved to, uh, you got a number here? Okay, very good. Yeah. Move to approve resolution two zero two three dash thirty three. Um, and that's titled resolution by which the city of Port Orford makes appropriations and adjustments to the two thousand twenty three. Two thousand twenty four municipal budget through an appropriation resolution.
I'll second that.
I will second.
Too late, Tim. Gary already got it. It's that lag you're.
Yep.
Any discussion on that? All right, I'm gonna call for the vote councillor Velisis.
Yes.
Councillor Rask.
Yes.
Councillor Heidi.
Yes.
Councillor Pogwits.
Tim, yes.
Councillor Burns.
Yes.
Councillor Webb.
Webb, yes.
Okay, eight B, emergency, uh, management right-of-way. This was touched on last month. Uh, and we did have initial approval prior to signatures, so. Can you?
There's a right-of-way.
Elaborate on that. You're like a little puppet.
Yeah, sorry. I was, uh, have to watch the bars, uh, to try and eliminate the static, but, um. So, uh, Commissioner Burns, uh, on behalf of the Emergency Management Commission, put in a right-of-way permit to do an emergency cash. Uh, I believe it was on eighteenth and Jackson. Is that correct, Commissioner Burns?
Jefferson.
Jefferson.
Jefferson, between Jefferson and, and DeeDee.
Yep.
Okay, um, since he submitted it, uh, between the time he submitted it and the time the packet had to go out, I didn't have, uh. We didn't have time to get the signatures on it. However, between the time the packet went out and now it has been signed off on by the chief of police and the head of public works.
What about the city administrator?
Yeah, how about that city administrator?
Just falls out of my mouth. I can't help it, I don't think.
Understandable.
Who's gonna be doing the work, Gary? Is it, is it us or who's gonna be clearing and grading?
Yeah, if, if we're able to do volunteers, we'll have volunteers, but it'll be, we'll have to figure that out.
Can I borrow the city back? Uh, so it's a right-of-way. That's all you're asking for is a right-of-way for this container on city property, just to clarify.
Yeah, and we've done a few of them in the past.
Yeah.
I think Joe Marsh or, or would be a good guy to get ahold of for that type of thing, um.
Cause really, we just have to grade it out like we did up by the fire station, maybe shade a little rock in there and have them dump it off.
Okay. Yeah.
Uh, I mean, it was pretty easy. I don't know what the ground is like.
It'll need to be cleared so we can hardly see the grades right now, but it, it looks like there's quite a bit that just needs to be moved around.
Yep. Make a motion to approve emergency management right-of-way.
So I'm just gonna call for the vote, since we talked about it. Uh councillor Rask.
Yes.
Councillor Webb.
Webb, yes.
Councillor Burns.
Burns, yes.
Councillor Heidi.
Yes.
Councillor Velisis.
Yes.
Councillor Pogwits.
Tim, yes.
Now, could, could I ask, um, I, w- w- would that be possible to do volunteers? Shayla, do, is there a. To go in and, uh, clear the property and.
We just need the volunteer for it, man.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the volunteers.
They can't run heavy equipment, but they can go in and be helpful. Yeah, me too.
So that, that would be the first thing we'll do and then we can see what the work would take and then I come back to the council and let everybody know.
Wayne Moore is a good one too, um, so.
Oh yeah, and he's got the mower too.
Yeah, Wayne would be really good. They're usually, those two are quite helpful. Anything. I do have a little bit concerned about this particular license. And I, I know that we've accepted and passed it. I just. Gary, you confirm that you are the owner of the property. Adjacent to the city's right-of-way. So this actual, this is actually not a document that's going to.
Hold up.
It's not.
I don't understand.
Well, in order to get right-of-way usage, then you have to be the property owner adjacent to that right-of-way. And we are not, you are not. And I don't know, I mean.
City can't.
See, that's what I mean, like, wh- how do you do that? I don't know how you do that, but I, I mean, Orion and. Sanders would be the ones that would be, uh.
It's actually eight street from looking at the map.
Street, right?
I think so. I don't, a portion of it would be right-of-way off, off of Jefferson and then I think it's eight, I think it's actually eight street.
Oh, and not ninth?
Or ninth. It's one of those.
I think it's.
Maybe it's ninth, but yeah, you're right. So it would be a street, uh, maybe a street vacation.
Do you know anything about that Shayla? Would that. And the city appropriate right-of-ways for itself, its own use?
Depends on what the purpose of the right-of-way is. I mean, normally a right-of-way is used for the purpose of what it's granted for. Which is streets or, you know, something to that effect without it being vacated for that purpose.
I just read all of the agreements that are here.
I mean, your, your right-of-way usage license says that licensee confirms they are the owner of the property adjacent to the city's right-of-way. So normally this is done by an owner of the property.
Next door, right?
Yeah, we, we just own the other side of the right-of-way instead of the homeowners. We own the inside and lay on the outside.
Yeah, that's not, that's not exactly the way this works.
Is this form? Were you advised to use this form?
This is what I was told last meeting to fill this out and.
I don't know that there, there another one exists, but I'm thinking maybe there should be another one that exists with language more.
Well, now I'm wondering if we told Gary wrong and we're just putting something on city property.
Well, yeah, I mean, that. That's right. I mean.
That's what we were planning on doing was putting it on city property.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then the mayor got all wormy about it. Maybe it was Brett, one of us did. No, we, that's good. That's what we're here for.
I, I just don't want anybody to get in trouble. That's.
Right.
And right now it's just. Yeah.
What you got, Ann?
Can we talk?
That bothers me about this law is that John Isidore has said it's a different address. And so one thing that made me feel good about this is there is like public notice. And so if people in the neighborhood were concerned and they thought it was in lone location. And now it's gonna be in a different one, we would have not been able to hear that. I don't know if anybody else has that concern, but anyway.
It, it is ninth street. It's between, it's ninth street between DeeDee and Jefferson.
Okay.
Didn't we used to advertise all these too?
I don't recall ever doing this.
Well, I just, usually you contact the. You would contact the, the owners adjacent to anything that you were asking for.
Now the school.
You know what I mean?
The school ended up getting. It, um, you know, the Jackson Street cache. It, um, you know, the Jackson Street cache.
Yeah.
Is on a right-of-way.
Right, right.
So I don't know how different this would be than that.
Yeah, I don't know how, who got that. I mean.
The school obtained that. The school asked for that.
Right. Well, I don't know, like, if it was like a human being or, or how, you know, is it the district? Was there a name? I just, I don't wanna see anything happen like bad for Gary for him having his name, you know? He's the guy with his pants down here. That's all.
Does it have to, does the law require that it be a property owner requesting it or is this just a form problem?
This is the city's adopted form.
So we can amend our own form?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So perhaps we should just do that.
That would be a great way to do it. I think you'd have to, I think you still wanna, well, I don't know. I mean, you could do what you want with your street, I guess. It just seems like communicating with nearby landowners is, um, something that we usually try to do when we're making changes.
And have you, Gary?
I haven't.
Well, and we'd have to be careful, too, cause that, you know, that legal wordage of opening it up to where you, you know, how would you write that you don't have to have?
Well, we just write up a different thing that says that we're gonna use, we, we give permission for the emergency management folks to use Eighth Street.
Oh, you mean just a whole different form? Okay.
That doesn't say.
Can't we just do it as a motion?
Yeah, it, yeah, exactly. I think there can be a motion to write a, a, a document to authorize the use of Ninth Street for the container.
But do we need a document, I'm wondering?
I, I like the idea that Pat had of just like, we just say the city council says we would like to use this part of our city for this purpose and do it because I was just looking at the ordinance that this form, you know, is for, and it really is about other people using the city right-of-ways, not about the city using right-of-ways, so.
Is our property.
Right.
And it's mobile. It's not, you know, and, and so if we ever needed to get it, we could remove it, jerk it out of the way. So. Um, that's, seems like it was rhetorical. So do we need to like, like yank the motion that we made?
Um, you would make a motion to vacate the motion that was just made in regards to this right-of-way and then make a new motion to allow city property to be used for this service.
Okay, so let's do some motion vacate.
So then I would rescind my second.
You gotta vacate it.
Oh, not rescind.
Motion.
Vacate.
The motion to vacate.
My second. Did I second it?
You, you made it.
I made it.
So who seconded it? Gary did, right? So you have to vacate.
I'll vacate my second on the right-of-way request.
And then I'll do the same.
Okay, and we all just learned something. If we vote on something, we have to vacate the motion, and if we don't vote on it, we can just rescind. Learn something every day. Okay.
Well, you have to vote on the vacation, though.
Oh, okay. Any discussion on the vacation? Hearing none. Counselor Pogwitz.
Tim, yes.
Counselor Velisis.
Ann, yes.
Counselor Tidy.
Yes.
Counselor Burns.
Yes.
Counselor Rask.
Yes.
Counselor Webb.
Webb, yes.
Okay. Now I would entertain a motion to vacate Ninth and Jefferson Street to.
The street vacation is a much, no, I said you make a motion.
Yeah, yeah.
Vacate your previous motion, but a motion to vacate a street is a much larger process than this.
Well, I moved to, I moved to, um, permit the emergency, um, Department of Emergency Response. What did I say? I moved to permit, allow, direct, direct. Direct them to use. Is this our right address?
Uh-huh.
It is. Do we know that?
Ninth Street, yeah.
Ninth Street. So direct them to use Ninth Street between DeeDee and Jefferson as a staging point for um, an emergency cash.
Right-of-way on that street.
Well, it's the whole street.
It is. It's the street.
So, okay.
Second. That's a good motion. Okay, any discussion on that? Okay, Counselor Tidy.
Yes.
Counselor Rask.
Yes.
Counselor Burns.
Yes.
Counselor Velisis.
Yes.
Counselor Webb.
Webb, yeah.
Counselor Pogwitz.
Tim, yes.
Okay. So we are moving along. Brick grant resubmital. I guess I skipped ahead. Um, and now we're gonna move on to eight D. This is the Orca Agreement Discussion. This came up. Uh, Keely brought it to me. Orca, they, uh, they are the, uh, Low Income Household Water Assistance Program. I almost signed it just cause, you know, it's not a cost to the city, but I just wanted to run it by you guys because it is an agreement.
I moved to approve the agreement to extend Low Income Household Water Assistance Program.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Okay, I will call for the vote. Counselor Velisis.
Yes.
Counselor Webb.
Webb, yes.
Counselor Pogwitz.
Tim, yes.
Counselor Rask.
Yes.
Counselor Tidy.
Yes.
And Counselor Burns.
Yes.
Okay, continuing action items. I don't think we have any off of this agenda, do we? Oh, we're not done, sir. No, we're not done. No, with this part. This does not seem like the city of Port Orford Council tonight so far.
I ha- I actually have one more thing to bring back up because we didn't entirely, um, nail down like the, the co- the topic of how much we're gonna pay the administrator. I, so I just feel like I wanted to like tell you that piece. I hate to like do that, but it just seems like it's an important thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, there's just a lot that we're going through here. So, um, it's a little bit hard to, uh, ask the question of like, oh, how much money do we have to spend? Because when we ask that question, you know, as Tim and I described, we kinda get the answer, like, we're gonna be, we're not gonna have enough money. We're gonna be in the hole at the end of this year, some, and then some more. And, um, you know, we've had this discussion privately, I think all of us have with, uh, David about how the we, we had budgeted based on, um, much higher expectations for citations, and so we're really falling below budget. That's the, a big reason. And, you know, the larger reason is we didn't have a finance director. We've had, you know, we've, we've been in flux, so it's taken people a while to figure things out. So anyway, that's where we're at. Um. We came up with the possible range of, uh, what we could, um, pay based on what we had with John Huddle and, you know, he had put together that idea that he could have, he could, he's been working for eighty and David was working for forty. So that's kinda, um, how he came up with sort of a high end of. So I came up with a range of eighty to a hundred and ten with the idea of the high range being the person who would have absolutely the top skill of budgeting and everything, and that we adjust downward, um, as need be. According to David, he said, um, you know, we're gonna be short at the end of this year to, uh, to fund this position. And so we talked about scrounging around, um, and you may recall, uh, at the end of last meeting, um, even though, uh, it was not, we talked about this, that there was like ninety-five thousand dollars that got, um, shifted from, uh, the general fund to Parks. And, um, that is, um, a source of money that if by consensus we decided that we could use for this budget, uh, item, or just to make sure we actually don't go into the red, uh, that we could just not necessarily take the full action right now. We could let him, just let him know by consensus and then he could work on things, uh, more specifically. Um, but that's what was recommended. And, uh, so I just wanted to bring that up.
So it seems like that should be part of the job description or that we include eighty to a hundred and ten thousand?
You know, I, I ended up taking it out of the job description because at the last meeting, there was some problem with like, are we adopting that? And so we came up with the idea of having the range that will be in the job announcement. And then we can come up with, when we pick our candidate, we'll come up with like who is what they have, who they are, and then we will be negotiating to figure out what the actual final is gonna be, if that makes sense.
So we would use the eighty to one-ten in the announcement? Or no, no salary in the announcement?
That's what I'm thinking in the announcement, although I'm a little bit worried about maybe it's too high and maybe we should just go eighty to a hundred. I kinda was hoping to go a little higher just to try to attract somebody who really has the skill, cause I think if we get somebody super competent, it would pay for itself because, um, you know, part of our budgeting woes have also been that we've had to pay for extra audits. We've had to pay for extra, um, you know, costs that come from not having somebody in, in place that is super competent. So anyway.
And I thought we talked about like one-ten to one-thirty last meeting. Like, I thought that's where we landed on. Not that I'm not saying that that's what it needs to be. I'm just saying that we kind of already authorized up to a hundred and thirty, so.
But we didn't know that we, if we had the money or not.
Right. That's a good point.
It's been hard to like get that answer to like, how much do we have, honestly? And so it's to play with. Tim, I see your hand.
Could we say starting at eighty thousand based on experience or? Um, about, I mean, we'll dip, whatever we put in there, it'll be based on experience if we have a range, obviously, but.
Tim.
So do we need to just make a motion, uh, or get a consensus on, on what Dave tells us our max can be, is our max? Starting at eighty and going to whatever, uh, our finance director tells us could be?
I think Tim had something.
Go ahead, Tim.
Ann, do you think it's appropriate for me to read a couple of the paragraphs from the email today from David?
Um. I, I suppose so. I, I don't remember. I'd have to, um, let's see. Yeah, you could.
Would, would counsel mind?
Oh, go ahead, Tim. Do a little premise on what it's about, though.
So this is basically, we reached out to David asking what, if we could afford a full-time, uh, finance and C A. That was an early on question. And basically, we got an answer back that we budgeted seventy-one thousand for the C A position for this year. Thirty-four thousand of that has been used and the remainder can be used for the new hire. Beyond that, it gets pretty slim pickings, so much that I predict, projected the revenues and expenses for this year, and it does not look good. Reven- revenues are coming in significant, significantly below budget, but expenses are as projected so far. In other words, the money is not there to pay the expenses as budgeted. Although the city can limp through this year, next year is going to be problem, problematic. So that's just a couple of the paragraphs of this email, and I don't know what you guys all read into that. I know what I read into it. Um, but Ann and I have already discussed some ideas and she did as well with David, so there's stuff to work on, but you can see it's not just this year. It could be the following year and the year after that we could be struggling.
And so my rationale, okay, keep going.
Yes, you're good, Ann.
Okay, my rationale on the range was the idea that if we said eighty to a hundred and ten thousand, you know, if we got like the person who's just the grand slam person, you know, um, maybe we stretch and reach for that because we real, we make the strategic decision that this person's gonna be able to help us because they are professional. Look at how we're a- allocating our resources and think about it. You know, cause it's, um, it's one thing for us to like be looking at the budget and scraping through to try to figure out how we're gonna advertise. You know, that's not really our role. Our role is to hire somebody who's super competent and ca- and has experience at this and can look at things like revenue and expenses and, and put it together. So that's what we need to do. And so anyway, I was thinking if we go with that range, you know, we can, we can offer somebody lower, you know, if they're not there. And so, you know, and we can be learning more. Um, the other piece of this whole thing that we haven't talked about is the benefits package. And so, uh, actually, David sent me an email just before the meeting and, you know, we tried to get this information earlier. And so I'm sorry we didn't have it, but we just got it, um, that that the cost of benefits is actually gonna be really significant, too. So there may be a little bit more research that we need to do, but I'm, what I'd really like to do is put the job announcement out as soon as possible so we can get onto that, um, piggyback Lakeside job, just job offer at least and get it out there. And, and, you know, if we need to make adjustments, uh, so be it.
So you're, we're, we're all good for doing the, proceeding with the announcement now, right?
Yeah, based on our job description, I think we can do it, but, you know, having consensus on the amount and also consensus on the idea that can, if we can use that, that money, um, if we can, if we have consensus that we can use that money that got moved to Parks in the budget, um, and find, um, another sort, I don't understand, and maybe Greg, you understand why that, that got moved to Parks. David didn't know. John didn't know, um. But I'm hopeful, I've sent you that grant application. I think we could go after that, the grant, you know, to get seventy-five thousand dollars. So anyway.
Well, but regardless, I don't think we can just do a consensus to change the budget without.
He, he said just get a consensus so that we can have it as a placeholder and then he can, that's kinda what he recommended to me, talking to him today about it.
Do you guys feel comfortable giving a consensus on something like that this quick?
On the eighty to a hundred and ten?
No, on the playground equipment. Like, that's a whole different, different discussion, though. So, and I'm kinda wondering on the eighty to a hundred and ten, if we're, if we're paying seventy-one right now, would we be better off to go to seventy-five to a hundred?
I would agree with that statement.
Ten thousand's ten thousand.
Yep, I agree.
But do we wanna have a basement? I mean, you know, do you wanna go sixty to a hundred and twenty or, you know?
Oh, I guess, may, yeah, I mean, we could go sixty-five to a hundred and that's a pretty good, I mean, that shows the stretch, that shows that based on qualifications. It gives them a little bit of room.
Ann, could you share with us what the, um, Lakeside City Administrator slash, uh, Finance Director is making?
Yeah, one second. Let me get it out here. Uh.
I thought you told me it was a hundred and five, but I can't recall for sure.
Yeah, I have it right here. I just don't, can't keep it in my mind.
Okay.
Um. Theirs is actually, uh, sixty to seventy.
Oh, really?
They, yeah, but they don't have like the departments that we have, like they don't have, you know, that's the thing that's really hard about these is, um, some cities have a police department, some don't, some have a library, some have a this, that and the other. So anyway.
I don't know. We gotta come up with a number. Seventy-five to a hundred, eighty-five to one-ten?
Like sixty-five to a hundred.
Yeah, sixty.
Sixty-five to a hundred? Uh, that could be a motion if you guys wanted to do a motion.
I mean, I wouldn't. It's a, it's forty grand. I mean, that's.
Huge cap.
Yeah, seems like, I mean, you could get a real.
Well, but like, what if we don't get that many candidates and all the candidates are only suitable for the administrative side of it?
Well.
Hey, what's that?
So we don't hire them.
Okay.
No, but if we had a good administrator, then we, you're thinking then throw some money at.
At a finance or, or some supportive help on the finance end of it, you know, cause.
I would make a, I would make a motion for the salary to be between seventy thousand and one- I would make a, I would make a motion for the salary to be between seventy thousand and one hundred thousand.
For the city administrator?
For the city administrator.
And Finance Director next.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion on that? And this, you know, and just because you did say that and Finance Director, like this job description is or the city administrator with the ability to do the finance directors jobs. I was only saying that because I didn't want to make sure it wasn't part of the motion.
Oh, right.
Didn't make the motion, so. No. Okay. So do we have any discussion on this?
It seems like the, that low isn't low enough in my opinion. I just, I mean, that's, it doesn't leave any. I mean, whoever we hire gets, uh, is automatically earning more than whoever previous, you know, it just.
They might have more experience.
Well, they may.
I think we would.
They might not do.
Going for.
And that's kind of a, is that not kind of a binding document, Shayla? When you, if you advertise that you're going to pay somebody a basement of seventy thousand, you need to pay seventy thousand.
Yes, if you find somebody who you want to hire, but you may not. And so you're completely still up at your discretion. You can.
Can we just say salary dependent on experience?
That's what it says. It says the range. I mean, that's what the proposed job descriptions say. They say, here's the range dependent on experience. And so that's where I was saying, we're not making the decision today. We will see who the person is and then we will, as a council, get to discuss specifically if we think it's worth paying somebody or not.
But we put a range in there, correct?
Yeah.
Can we eliminate the range?
I don't recommend eliminating the range because I don't think that job seekers are going to dig that hard. They're going to want to know.
Right.
They're going to want to know what kind of quality of job they're applying for upfront. That's just.
And if they're not worth seventy thousand, I don't think we're going to want to hire them.
Well, we'll see.
I can't imagine wanting to do that job for less than that.
So we got a, a motion in a second.
Well, and so, and we're making, yeah, we do have a motion in a second, but we did forget about benefits. Yeah. Like that, that is part of what we offer. Are benefits in the job?
You could add something like with the competitive benefit package or something like that.
Right.
That'll work for now too. I just wondered when I was looking through the budget a minute ago, it, we, I hit some, I was trying to find the salaries of current employees. They never put that in my general budget. And, um, well, I've seen it lately somewhere. And, uh, a new city manager at seventy thousand is going to be earning damn near as much as our police chief who's been here for 10 years. Is that what we want to do? That's not what I want to do.
It is what I want to do because I think we need somebody who has the vision to be able to like, help us like get on track with our budget and everything in a way. And like get everything to work. So we're not in this cycle of like not doing grants, having, uh, you know, to pay for audits and all sorts of problems that we've been having. I think we need somebody who has the capability to like, do things and Hank does a great job at his part, but I think we need somebody to have the vision to help us on all these parts that haven't been happening.
I agree.
And they are the supervisor of all of, of everybody.
I just, I, it seems like we can't numerically force people by, by putting a number in the paper isn't going to make them that person, but it is going to make that the basement that we're going to pay them. And so that's what I'm saying is, is why do we need to have such a high, low figure?
Because we want to attract people that have qualifications.
But we've been down, I'm, I mean, um, how many, how many, what we ended up with last time? I wasn't here. So what counsel ended up on last time was out of a field of how many people? Three or five?
Three or four, I believe.
So there you go. I mean, if you want to attract that person that we're talking about, you need to put it like about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I just don't know how else you do it.
Well, I think we, I think we try and we have a job description that says, hey, this is a great place to live. You know, we emphasize that kind of stuff and we, you know, do our best to, to network it and share it with people. And, um, you know, as I said, Brett, I was actually super, I got so many positive responses like from other city managers and different people of saying, oh, we'll help spread this and oh, you know, this person might be interested in that, or this might be interested in that. And maybe they were just blowing sunshine, but it made me feel like it might be possible. I don't have the experience you guys have yet, but.
No, I just, I don't want us to get, we're not emphasizing the need for a interim. And at the same time, we're being pretty lofty about what we're hoping for. And so I could see some conflict there, but I, I'm really not married to any number or anything. I just don't know why we need to make the bottom so high. That's, I mean, it's not even that, it's, it's a lot of money. It's, but it's not. I mean, oh, seventy grand. What did Terry make when she left? Seventy-six or something?
Eighty-one.
Eighty-one. And that was with.
No, she was making eighty-eight.
That was with the, uh, sixteen thousand dollars for, uh, being the recorder.
Yeah, but then we got a recorder and she kept the money.
Yeah, that, that was a terrible deal that we worked out there. I just, well, I have eighty.
Any other discussion from anyone on this?
Did, did, tell us again, Anne, how much the Lakeside is that, is that even a comparable?
It's a smaller town.
What, he made, they made, she, they made seventy thousand, is that what?
Yeah, they're, they're, they were advertising sixty to eighty. Eighty is the max that they're doing there.
Yeah.
Like they don't have, you know, they don't have police, they don't have, um, let's see, I don't know what their public work scene is. I, I, I know some of, you know, I, it's really hard to pick and, as some of you guys, I know like Tim told me, he's been through this. It's really hard. Cities are apples and oranges. It's super hard to like, you know, come with the exact thing.
No, it's, it's apples and oranges for sure. That's.
Lakeside does not have a whole lot going on.
Lakeside?
Government, yeah.
I got a big old lake. That's right.
As far as department.
Well, I, I would, I would venture to guess that Hank takes care of his department pretty well on his own. You know, that's why we pay him. So it kind of negates that need, but, but we're not going to have a finance director. So okay, if you guys think that that's fine, I just don't, I worry about the money too. That's all.
Any other discussion on that? All right. I'll call for the vote. Counselor Bogwitz.
Tim, yes.
Counselor Webb?
Can you repeat the motion, please?
Uh, the motion was to put the range, well, this isn't word for word, but to put the range of the city administrator position from seventy to one hundred thousand dollars for range.
No, uh, Webb, no.
Counselor Rask?
Yes.
Counselor Burns?
Yes.
Counselor Tidy?
No.
Counselor Velisus?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passed. I asked him first. Oh, uh, Counselor Bogwitz, did I not ask you?
Yes, you did.
Yeah, I asked him first. Thanks, Tim. Okay, so the motion passes. Um, okay. And so because of the executive sessions, uh, we're going to go ahead and do considerations really quick. So if any public wants to, uh, step out, they can.
Do we need to talk about the ninety-five thousand from parks to general?
Uh, I don't really feel comfortable talking about that on the whim. I mean, there's no information. We don't, I mean, you guys want to talk about that right now?
We can bring it back at the next thing. I was just brainstorming with David today about these various things. And that was one pot of money he had identified to me before and, uh, said that apparently, you know, every month a little bit gets moved over from one to the other. And so if we could just say, hey, let's not do that right now. And then that way, uh, we could figure it out later. But if you guys don't feel comfortable with it, let's get, we can bring it back for the meeting. If we're going to have a meeting, um, on whenever the next meeting is.
I personally don't. I mean, we also had the budget committee to think about too, like that, that money was slid over during the budget cycle. So we'll get the answers on it and come back as soon as possible. Uh, so that's a continuing action item would be the playground.
I have one thing about the fire department. So there was an event, a burn to learn event that happened, um, a few days ago, and there was some issues with it. And, um, I, there's been discussion with the fire board and they're having a meeting coming up in the next week or two. And, um, I wanted to get a consensus of like, maybe Greg and I could be, attend the meeting and help create a, um, better criteria for burn to learns.
I think that they broke the law and they should be cited for it. We don't change the law because somebody doesn't like it.
That's a whole nother thing. I'm, I'm wanting to make sure it doesn't happen again.
Well, I guess my only question.
Well, then I would, why don't we just move to increase the fine to one hundred thousand dollars? It won't happen again.
But I mean, it, the, what, what we have right now is really vague. And so what I feel is it should just be word for word, how from the very beginning of the idea of burning a building, what all of the things are that need to be checked off.
Doesn't, like, isn't the learn to burn, like, isn't that a fire thing? Like, don't they have their own checklist or things that they have to do?
We have two things.
No, no, not us. Like a fire department.
Things in our ordinance that says that they need to go to the D E Q and they need council approval.
Right.
So I don't feel that there's a few other things that we could say they need to do.
Well, we, we would, the way that works, Gary, is that we then dictate what we want them to do. Notify the neighbors a week ahead of time and a day ahead of time.
That's what I'm saying.
Buy them a ticket to the movies. Whatever we decide to do, that's what, what our, um, that's why we are involved in that decision-making. And so that, like, on the busiest travel holiday of the, of the year, it's insane what happened there. And I'm glad we're talking about it. I don't, is there an update on enforcement?
Yeah, we're, there, uh, there's a meeting on the fourteenth with the fire board and then we're going to circle back on the twenty-first and have a conversation with them after they meet. Cause they weren't aware of it either. So.
One thing I will agree with you, Gary, is that resolution isn't quite clear with who is the responsible party. And it's been my experience that it's always the landowner that's the responsible party. And, and so.
But it isn't clear whether it's the fire department or the.
It's, it's. So the way that works is basically the only person that could apply for a burn to learn is the, uh, fire chief. That was the responsible party for that. But I just don't, um, i- i- if, if you have a, um, that, there was no misunderstandings. There was no misunderstanding. There was no confusion. There's, there's, um, an act of defiance. And there's, um, uh, and I'm not sure why. Um, but there's also a, a known act that was like knowingly, knowingly occurred.
Disregard.
A total disregard. And honestly, for, I don't want to go into the position of, of, of that person. I want to say that ultimately the homeowner, the landowner is who needs to have, um, because what happens is, is a guy goes to, and I'm not saying this happened here. And I'm not saying our fire department guys are bad. They're great. What has happened in the past and perhaps other places is that a developer will come in and he will say, hey, I've got a five thousand dollar check for you for the fire department and here you go. And I also would like to burn this piece of shit down. And that's what happens. And it's, it's money. It's always money. And with this pharmacy thing down here, people were sick. I mean, the council at the time made it to where you couldn't burn anything. You couldn't burn brush in your front yard, uh, uh, for, for some time. So I don't know. I mean, the kid gloves need to come off when you're talking about a, a, an official. You're talking about an official, a public safety official that defied public law, rules. I don't know what it is, but but you can't really, I, that's what I'm saying. How do you, it, it, that's the one thing that I agree with you on the ordinance that needs addressed is, is the fines need to be probably increased.
And, and who's, who's responsible, you know, to?
So I was thinking about it. If, if I have some neighborhood kids, they're gonna, um, cut the brush in my yard and they're going to have a four by four pile like it says in the ordinance and they're going to get the permit and everything or they don't go get the permit, I have to. And if they burn it and they don't have a permit, I get the ticket. Those kids that are burning the four by four pile aren't going to get the ticket. So it would seem, uh, it would seem like it would be different to not hold that landowner responsible. Ultimately, that's who profits and.
But we don't have anything in place for them to come, they're, they're, the only thing we have is a four by four. We don't have a.
Well, right. It's so, so applying for the permit is only part of it, right? I mean, you gotta apply it for, apply for the permit.
Like, do we, I, it needs to be hashed out. Do we want the landowner to come in and do the permit and then have the fire chief come in and say he wants to do a burn to learn or just, just commit the fire chief? Somehow it seems like the property owner should be involved, but.
So you're wanting to.
Fire department would have a checklist of, has this been D E Q certified? Is this safe? Is this burnt? Like it, it seems like the fire department should have its own set of rules that it has to comply by for burn to learn. Like everybody I've talked to, we're the only place that does it anymore. It's not that easy to do. So we could even think of just saying no burn to learns and be done with it.
Which we didn't have.
Things because nobody does it anymore because it's not the same world regardless of like what people say there's.
Last time they did one though, we watched them. We watched them go in, the man went in to the fire and with the hoses and the hat and the ding and they're saving people and this didn't happen. I, I did ask that though. We, a couple of the, a couple of the, uh, newer firemen were signed off on this fire. I, I did ask them.
Were signed off.
Were signed off to go into fires now because a couple of them were so new that they hadn't been on a fire yet and hadn't got their checklist off. So that's ultimately the reason why I guess David did this was he had some new guys and one of them was our city employee. They got finally signed off to actually be a fireman. So I, I didn't know that until days afterwards.
I know, and I had asked that too, but that was.
But it still doesn't go to the point of what, what happened, but I'm just saying, you know what I mean?
Well, I was told by somebody on the fire board that it wasn't that safe. And usually they have a smoke machine to do those things. So it's not, you know, and they did. It's great that they got in there. In the past, I think I've seen more agencies come in and help out.
Yeah. Yeah. We've had them from Gold Beach all the way up and, and abandoned the language. They all come down and they all learn at the same time.
So the hitch in this is the fire board didn't want to call an, uh, uh, emergency meeting that's close to their regular one. That we'll talk, we'll meet with them on the fourteenth. I don't know about the, the criteria though. Like, is that going to be a conversation we can have without, you know?
Yeah, I don't.
Talking with them or.
And do you want us to go, I mean, is.
I think that we have to have some people go for sure.
Okay.
It's pretty straightforward ordinance. I mean, I don't.
Well, and not to mention the breach of contract.
Yeah.
I hate using that word, but I mean, and that's, you know.
We do, I feel we need to have it nailed down for the safety of our residents. We can't just let this, the fire department.
So why don't we have?
If we don't do something right now, excuse me, Pat, if we don't do something about this particular situation, we, it's, it's the wild west.
Yeah. So.
It's the wild west.
We can start with this fire meeting maybe by going and asking them not to prescribe any more burn and learns until we get the process and the, you know, the refined to where everybody's happy.
I don't want to dictate what they do.
Well, it's just asking them not to do a learn and burn.
I mean, the, the, you know, I don't want a checklist or that's their business.
No, the DEQ, council approval.
DEQ, they come to us with a DEQ.
Who's responsible for paying the fine.
So maybe that's it, maybe we just go to that fire meeting and ask them for their process for burn to learn. Like what process do they use for burn to learn? And then we come back to the council and, and talk about it from there. Cause I don't know how you and Greg could come up with criteria.
They're gonna have a separate criteria for what their, their training is about than us protecting us.
Right, but do you know what their burn and learn criteria is right now?
No.
So if we get that established first, then we can have our conversation about.
I don't know that we need to really know that or have anything to do with it. We have our own, we should have our own criteria for the safety of the residents.
And that could be.
Don't think that that pertains to their criteria at all or.
Different than it, because if they go to the DEQ or, um, get council approval or not, that doesn't really have anything to do with their training. They just, they're training without doing any of that. So they've got criteria for what they're learning, what they're, we've got criteria for the rules. If you're going to do a burn to learn.
I meant their criteria for how, what they, what steps they take before they do a burn to learn. Not what they're training, not anything like that. Just like, who do you check with before you do a learn and burn? You know, cause the cities obviously should be one of them, DEQ should be one of them. Like, to me, that should be all work of the fire department as they come in with a checklist and say, we got all the stuff that you guys want us to have. We're doing it on this date, we've done the proper notice.
We'd like to do it on this day.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
So we agree that there needs to be more clarification in the process, right? So can we direct that Gary work with them perhaps to achieve that?
So when I.
There was a representative from each of those. If we had Gary be our representative and there was a representative from the fire department and they put these things together and they come up, up with a good idea.
We could look around at other cities that, when I, I wrote that ordinance, that burn ordinance. And I wrote it using, um, language from Gold Beach and from Bandon. And. Maybe Kuzbey, but it was kind of a, a, you know, it, it was a customized thing for, for us. And it seemed to work pretty well. I mean, honestly, people couldn't burn their brush in their yards and they were saying, thank you. The only. Thing was the fire department and, and we, when we looked at it, we talked about the safety of the firefighters. And that was it. It wasn't about making houses go away. It was about the safety of our firefighters. That's right. And that's the only reason that it was even slightly permitted. Now, it is warming to, to understand that somebody got something signed off for that, but. I, that went fast. I mean, that went, that fire went fast and it was, it's, I just, man, I feel a little bit insulted.
They left the fire going without anybody.
Live within a stone's throw of that place.
It was pretty embarrassing being the mayor sprinting over there and then getting there and it's all calm, everybody's milling about.
It was a little bit insulting. At 5:20, all the fire trucks left. At five, at 5:20, all the fire trucks left because we had to get out of their way on Ninth Street. We were at the tree lighting ceremony.
Right.
After the tree lighting ceremony at 5:30, uh, a whole bunch of us walked over to a raging fire with nobody there.
Nobody there.
No, no fire department whatsoever, nothing. There was a ton of people at the, you know, a block away from that the entire night.
And you all got the letter from a constituent about what happened to her for the fire.
That's a huge liability for the.
That was going to be my question is this opens the city up for liability, period, right?
Would that be the.
I mean, we were in charge of this, we didn't.
Right.
No, we didn't approve it.
So it'd be the on the fire department.
On the fire department, it's on whoever approved that fire.
And they're going to deal with that in their meeting, correct?
Well, we all attend the meeting, but we don't.
I'm sorry?
All attend the meeting.
All attend the fire department meeting.
Yeah, Greg and I will go.
Right, but they're going to deal with who's liable for what and who gets their hands slapped.
I got that. Yeah, I'll report back.
We don't want to lose the fire chief.
My guess is our, our insurance carrier might be interested in the CIS.
Well, because we contract, I mean, we pay them to do that. We paid those guys to do that. They use our water and our trucks and, and.
Okay, well, it sounds like this can be fixed with a form. I mean, the preemptive part of it anyways, we need more boxes to check around here. So is there any direction for this fire meeting? Or are we just going to go and get some information, see what happens and then circle back on the 21st when we have more?
I think that we should have for a burn to learn, two responsible people. The chief and the landowner. Spell that out in the ordinance. I didn't really make that very clear. It was written with the idea that everybody wanted to kind of follow the rules. That was silly.
Pretty neat, you'll have a chance to amend your ordinance that you wrote though.
There actually, there's something, there's stuff that's not in there that I thought was in there too already.
Okay, so that, we do need to work on it, everybody agrees on that. Is there anything we can take to this fire meeting that, uh, benefit until we know what actions they're going to take?
I have a question.
Dan?
Yeah, I wanted to just. Yeah, I wanted to just ask about, you know, we're talking about the proactive thing in the future moving forward, which sounds great. But there was also, I know, I heard Brett say, this was a violation clearly. And there's a fine and what are we going to do about it? And so that's like a different path. And so I don't know, Pat, were you thinking that you'd go to this meeting and kind of see what happens? And then that we would make that decision? Usually I think like, you know, an administrator would do the investigation, would find out that, oh, this, it, this ordinance was not followed, which, I mean, it's, it doesn't take much of an investigation since many of us walked down there to see it. And we know we didn't approve it and, um, anyway, are you going to, like, say there will probably be a fine? I mean, I'm just wondering, do we need to?
I'm just gonna administer one. I'll just figure out how to issue one and, and issue it. And I think that, and it settled on that being the property owner, if I heard correctly.
I don't, yeah, I think so.
I'm not sure if there's a logic to that, but.
They're both, I don't know, the, the.
We gotta do something and that's all we can do.
Maybe Shayla could advise us on, on that since it is a little bit, um, unclear.
News to me this evening, so I will look into it and report back to the mayor.
And I would just add, just throw in too, I was really concerned about the water thing just because we've all been super careful with water. And we know John Isidore has asked people when they're like gonna power wash their buildings or whatever to pay attention. And it's just another element of like, why communication and criteria need to be improved? So it sounds like everybody's on the same page. Thank you.
I think that we could have looked, you know, another thing that we talked about in the past was. Now, in a fire, a real fire, you wouldn't worry about what route the fire trucks are taking, but those are heavy. And if we've noticed, I think I've noticed, um. Water lines. Main lines in the streets. Breaking shortly after something big happened somewhere.
I think there were two breaks in the Lindbergh fire.
Yeah, and I, so I've seen that over the years and I, that would, might be something that Public Works would look at too, or the planning, whoever, you know, just to where we don't.
If it's an old part of the city where the pipes are.
I mean, just, yeah, I mean, the whole thing's already bad, so let's, you know, if we can avoid driving if a truck. I mean, what if that dude just parked that truck right on the worst wooden pipe in town, you know?
Well, and it's the water hammer is really the.
And we can ask them to stay off the right of ways. Cause part of me lands on those pipes are supposed to be underground and trucks are supposed to be able to roll over them. So if you can't roll a truck over it, it's compromised and needs to be replaced. Don't flare at me, John.
In, in case of emergency.
No, I mean, I'm just saying, yes, you shouldn't be able to run over the dang pipelines with trucks. That's, I mean, that they're on the edges of the roads and then they're in the street, so. And also remember, when you're turning hydrants on and off, like even though there are trucks parked there, it's most likely because they're getting hammered because the hydrants are getting shut off too fast. And so that weakens the lines. It's just a huge water hammer that.
Or even the engine.
Yeah, or turning off and on, like all those little racks on that AC pipe are worse than the actual.
Gotcha.
Cause the trench lines are pretty, pretty good. It's sandy soil around here, so if they break, it's because they're rotten. What are we talking about that for?
I don't know.
Sorry, we started talking about water stuff and I got off on a tangent. Okay.
I know, I'm just glad to hear we're going to do something about it.
Yes, okay, so you and Greg are going, we're just gonna kind of, uh, observe and report. And then we'll come back at the next meeting as far as, uh.
Recommendations.
As far as fines, I'll move forward with that on Shayla's recommendation. And, uh, what do we have for continuing action items? There was one earlier. Huh, must not have been that important. Um.
Counselor Velasquez, you are still muted.
Thank you. It was that budgeting thing, Pat, I think was the other continuing action item.
Oh, right, right, right. Okay, um. All right, so we'll call that good for continuing action items. Because of the executive session, I want to give anyone in the public a chance to come up for considerations on anything they'd like to talk about. Uh, I'll go ahead and hit that up again after executive session real quick though, just in case. Uh, where's my second page? Okay, so now we are going to go into.
That's for motion?
Now we are going to go into our executive session, ORS 192660. If I can get, uh, motion.
Yeah, I'll, I'll move to go into executive session under that number that you just said.
Open executive session.
Open executive session?
Under 1926602B.
Say that number.
Yep, very good.
Second.
Okay, so we have a first and a second to go into executive session. Uh, Tim, can we go into executive session? Counselor Bogwitz?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Velasquez?
Yes.
Counselor Rask?
Yes.
Counselor Tidy?
Yeah.
Counselor Burns?
Yes.
And Counselor Webb?
Webb, yes.
Okay, so I will now open up this.
It's an open session.
It's just an open session.
Oh, so it's not an open executive session?
Executive session, it's just an open session.
So do I even need to open it up under the ORS?
Well, you will later when we do these other items, but I thought that one was an open.
No, it is not this, the first one is an open session. So it's just an open session to, oh, so it's just an open session to, to, uh.
Well, it wouldn't.
To discuss the disciplining of or here complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent, just not.
It wouldn't be labeled and numbered and named if it wasn't something.
It's open executive session, the street of Silas.
Yeah, it's ORS 2-B.
Okay.
192660.
It was, it was news that Joseph too.
It's, it's, regardless, it's open.
It's open.
Okay.
Okay, so we don't really, we're, we're ready to go.
You're ready to go.
Okay, so, uh, like I say, this is new to me. So, uh, Corey, if you and the employees want to come up, um, and we're okay on presentation, right? As far as.
Do we have?
Yes, it's a time for a presentation by those who wish to present. It is not time for a conversation of the council.
Yeah.
No, it's just all for the stand-up here, I suppose. But yeah, you'll, you'll be representing us for the most part. Okay, um.
Would you guys like to grab a chair?
Yeah, we'll grab a chair.
Yeah, the law changed.
Even if you didn't, okay, the.
Yep, the law changed.
My write-ups on the screen here.
That's, that's okay, right?
Yeah, he has the ability to put that right up here.
Yeah. That's, uh, okay.
I mean, if you guys want to read them off, uh, how do you guys want to do this?
Um.
These write-ups.
We can, that might be a little hard, uh.
Should we not get the paper copies?
Um, I can go make them real quick, we might just need to take a 15 minute races.
Yes. I thought that we had them from the last time we did it.
I might, I can go double check.
Yeah, they should be on the right side of your desk, I think, and you will stack up.
Okay, so we will take just a five minute break. Brett, Kurt, sorry, we just got to get up. It'd be easier if we have the written material that we got on the screen. It should save us time in the.
Okay, thank you.
This is my first open session, blame it on the mayor.
I, well, I've never heard of an open executive session. The whole point of an executive session is it to be closed.
Which revised.
They can request that it be open, but that makes it not an executive session.
Okay, you mean this?
It's one or the other.
It's open.
It's, it's interesting.
It's a different thing.
Is, is, like, does, because, did you see on this, on our, on our agenda?
Is it up?
Shayla, it is titled.
Okay, well, we'll bring it up.
I know.
You have all four, you have all of them?
It has a whole different, uh.
What do you mean it has a whole different? What do you mean it has a whole different?
Are you fucking kidding me? Why are we still muted?
We can't hear online yet. If something's happening.
All right, can we be heard online now?
Yes, thank you, Joe.
All right, and just one last reminder that we are here to present facts and hear facts, and we're not here for discussion. Thank you, go ahead, Brett or Cory.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and council members. Yeah, my name is Cory Finnegan, I'm here as the union representative for Team Tris Local 206, representing Public Works employees Kurt Franciscane and Brett Brookhousen. Thank you for this opportunity to present this, these appeals. I wanted to give kind of an introduction to our appeals for four disciplinary actions this evening of, just to kind of set the stage of what our intent is here tonight. Our intent here is a couple of things. First and foremost, we understand that the Public Works Department is about relationships and we are looking to, we are looking for, and both Kurt and Brett will talk about this, we're looking for continuing professional, you know, positive workplace. That's our goal here. The issues in question that will be reviewed a bit in detail, although not, you know, I think we're not going to be belaboring the point of some of the stuff that happened. But I think it's fair to say it was a bad day and Public Works, and from what I understand, it's it's never quite escalated like it did that September 27th of this year. You know, a couple, kind of two things, you know, in addition to, you know, hoping that this might set the stage for a healthy path forward. We are also here to look at Brett and Kurt and talk about the multiple disciplinary actions that were issued to them. Let's see, the so, in the collective bargaining agreement, there is a just cause provision for disciplinary action and just cause entails a number of kind of issues and kind of prisms through which disciplinary action is, are assessed. And basically, an employer has the burden to prove just cause. Now, in, what, the just cause issue that I wanted to just mention for the council is the disciplinary actions that were issued, and there are four, were issued arising out of some interactions on September 27th of this year. And they were, I think, a handful of hours apart on the same day. Now, to talk about Brett, he had no disciplinary action on his record prior to this day. And he received a written warning for an incident in the morning, and then a written reprimand for an incident later that day. And if you look at then city administrators' letters, John Huddle, in each of these, he cited the, in Brett's case, the warning letter as previous discipline justifying progressive discipline. One of the issues of progressive discipline is that the concept provides an opportunity to improve, and the question we would ask is whether disciplinary action arising out of incidents hours apart that were ultimately received, you know, days or weeks later, Brett was not put on notice of any performance deficiencies, and he didn't have that opportunity to take that with him moving forward in the job and work on those areas. The same thing applies to Kurt, except there's another wrinkle, he had he also received, he received a bit more severe discipline because the day before the 27th, I believe, he had received a a written warning, which is the lowest level discipline. And then the next day, received, and when I say he received it, his, it was received based on actions or, you know, incident from, I believe, the 26th of the September. And then the next day, the same day, you know, the 27th of September, same issues, incidents with Brett, he received a written reprimand days or weeks later arising out of a morning incident, and then a two-day suspension. So within the span of twenty-four hours, incidents over twenty-four hours, he went from no disciplinary action to a two-day suspension, which is a fairly significant disciplinary action. So, you know, just to underscore that for the council, in these cases, that, you know, that we are conceding, you know, improvement needs to be made, we are looking for a healthier, really, healthier professional relationship there. But that being said, the opportunity to improve for Brett and Kurt was not there. There was a succession of disciplinary actions so quick that Kurt literally went from no disciplinary action in a, what, fifteen, seventeen-year career here with the city to a two-day suspension within twenty-four hours, incidents arising under twenty-four hours. And Brett is currently sitting at a written reprimand for that duration. So, you know, our appeal here this evening is, you know, is to propose in the spirit of acknowledging our part in what happened, but appealing to have either a removal of disciplinary action or perhaps a lower-level disciplinary action for each of them. Because I think the message has been sent and understood, I don't believe there's been any other issues pertaining to this matter that have occurred for Brett and Kurt since this day in late September. So I'll stop there for the time being, I just wanted to give a introduction to our appeal this evening. So I think Brett is going to walk us through a couple of these letters.
Sure.
Thanks.
Okay. Which one are we gonna start with here? Can you display one of the two there for me, Joseph, please? Notice to impose discipline. This one is very first one, okay. That one is okay, so let's just go over the facts here. Do you want me to read this, or? I'll read it. It says, "On or about September 27th, 2023, at approximately 7:30 a.m., Kurt and Brett approached John Isidore agitated and upset about an employee who was not at work. They complained about John Isidore's favoritism in his preferable treatment of Michael. John had given Michael the day off to care for his children, who were home from school with hand and foot mouth disease." Okay, and it says, "Kurt and Brett were speaking in tones that reflected disrespect and disbelief of John. His actions and his words. John Isidore is the direct supervisor of Brett and Kurt. They also accused Michael of lying, so he would not have to read meters." So on that morning, basically, well, let's just start the day before. The day before we went home, it was right at 4:30, everybody's going home. I overheard John, as we were leaving, walking out the back, talking with Michael, saying, "Yeah, go ahead, take the day off." So from there, I already knew that I was gonna be reading meters. I show up the next day, I even wore my waterproof clothing and everything. And completely was okay with reading meters. Kurt was like, "Where's Michael?", and I said, "He's not gonna be here, I already know this because I overheard this conversation yesterday." So, John showed up and we told John that this was planned and this was messed up. There was no screaming, no cussing at each other. I went to my truck to go read meters. Kurt, at the time, what, I can't remember what Kurt, Kurt basically called it out, saying that he overheard you, and John said, "I'm the effing boss, it's my decision", along those lines. And that's that write-up. So I guess us us speaking in disrespect and disbelief of John and his actions, I don't quite understand what we said to bring this write-up into perspective here. And I'm wondering if I can get any clarity on what we actually did, because it doesn't say what we did. I mean, it says, "We spoke in disrespect and disbelief of John and his actions", but it doesn't really say anything that should even be cause of a write-up.
Well, we're not doing the back and forth, we're gonna do this statement, then we'll do your statement.
So, how would you like to proceed and talk about the second one?
Okay. Am I gonna have to read everyone's? Okay, or do you want to read?
If you'd like to, maybe you can go through it.
You wanna read? I'm like super nervous to read.
Sure.
Yeah, do you move the second write-up then?
Yeah, so we're looking at the notice of intent to impose written reprimand. Okay. Okay, so, has everyone read this? The council's had an opportunity to review? Oh, okay. Well, then I'll just read through the facts as found by John Huddle on the 5th of October. So again, this was September 27th, and I believe this was a few hours later, right?
Two hours later, when I went to go turn in the meter book, I basically got the employee wages printed out from DINA, something that I'd been working on trying to get from the city the whole time we were in wage negotiations with the union. And I was unable to get these during our whole negotiation, essentially, until this moment.
Okay, and I just wanted to highlight that, you know, this was a couple hours later after the incident that led to Brett's written warning. So a couple hours later, he's looking at a written reprimand in a few days. Let's see, and just as an aside, as we were talking and preparing for this, about talking about our our path forward is that they, and I believe Brett and Kurt will talk about this, they all, they acknowledge that there are issues that were discussed in these incidents that were more appropriate for the union to formally raise with the city. And that is the plan going forward, you know, if applicable. So looking at the facts, Wednesday, the 27th, Brett and Kurt came at John Isidore. questioning why an employee with less seniority was making a wage close to Brett. Uh, John told them that if they wanted to have a discussion, they needed to calm down, lower their voices. They, um, they were yelling, screaming, cursing at John while waving their arms and hands in a threatening behavior. They were also making accusations that John had stolen a saw. The saw in question was in John's work truck behind the passenger seat. There were on each side of John, or they were on each side of John making him feel cornered against my work truck, leaving him no safe exit, I'm guessing. Let's see, Officer Perry was there talking to Isidore about a tree that had fell on the roadway. Isidore didn't feel safe after an incident of 7:30 that morning, so he made eye contact with Corporal Perry indicating that he not leave. Perry backed up and captured much of the incident on a silent dash camera. So I, I think, um, Brett and Kurt may want to, um, talk about, uh, you know, the, the interactions that morning. I know that we've got some, some recording that, you know, we would, we would like to, to provide some context as to what happened. Let's see. So, um, this, you know, this particular situation, I guess, that, that kind of started this conversation about an employee's, you know, bargaining unit employee's wage is one of those issues that we discuss that's more appropriate, you know, probably to be addressed, you know, through, through a union representative if, if necessary. So, uh, let's see, Brett, how, what, how would you like to move forward on that? Yeah?
Okay, and on the wages, I was the, I'm currently the shop steward. We were in current negotiations over wages. So by me getting this printout finally at the end of tentatively agreeing basically upon everything, it was a shocker. That's why I brought this up to attention. So on Wednesday, September 27th, it says, "Brett and Kurt came at John Isidore questioning why an employee with less seniority was making a wage close to Brett." Now that statement is true, but basically, "I went to John Isidore questioning why an employee with less seniority was making a wage close to me. Kurt was just there and he was just a bystander at that point in time." John told us, it says here, that John told us both if we wanted to have this, this discussion, that we needed to calm down and lower our voices. At no point in time was my voice raised during this conversation of the wages. Neither was Kurt's. The accusation that we were both yelling, screaming and cursing at John while waving our arms and hands in a threatening behavior is completely false. At no point were we yelling or screaming at John. There were curse words said, there was curse words and disbelief that, oh, here's this saw that's been missing for a year, now you finally have it. It's one of those situations like, if I borrowed your bicycle and didn't return it for a year, you'd be wondering where it was. So, it says, then it gets down to that point where the circular saw came into play. "They were also making accusations that John had stolen a saw. The saw in question was in John's work truck behind the passenger seat." It says, "We were on each side of John, making him feel cornered against his work truck, leaving him no safe exit." In the recording, John even opened up his door, he could have left at any time. He had a safe exit, he had a police officer standing there. The police officer could have intervened if he truly felt like John was in a dangerous situation. Says, "Officer Perry was there, talking to Isidore about a tree that had fallen in the roadway. Isidore didn't feel safe after an incident at 7:30 a.m. that morning. So he made eye contact with Corporal Perry indicating that he not leave. Perry backed up and captured much of the incident on silent dash cam." So Perry being there, he was there, he did have a silent dash cam. But he also had his cell phone up in his video. Perry was sitting in his car, recording the whole situation with his cell phone. His cell phone would have had a better picture, better angle and audio. He could have used that as evidence during this whole thing. Now, I believe that they picked the evidence of the silent dash cam to prove a narrative. They were basically painting me and Kurt in a negative light because Kurt talks with his hands a lot. And we were both gesturing with our hands in this video. And you can see from this video that we, that we will play, we were not in John Isidore's face. I was standing back and in the audio at the beginning of it all, I even said, "I don't wanna do this" and tried exiting the situation because I knew it was heated. Um, it says, "John Isidore described this conduct as threatening. He was backed against his car and two workers were on either side of him. He was accused of favoritism and being a thief. He felt threatened by the two employees being on either side of him." Now, if standing next to your boss is threatening, that, I don't get the whole point behind that. Says, "Andrew Perry described the conduct by Brett and Kurt were amongst the most least professional he had ever seen. He would have sent both of them home immediately. The videotape from the dash cam shows Kurt gesturing and pacing towards and away and towards Isidore." So the whole statement between Perry describing the conduct as the least professional he had ever seen, but yet Perry made no, and no, Perry did not try to intervene, say, "Hey, we're in a public place here. We, we gotta calm down, step to the side, let's talk this through." There is no intervention from him to cool the situation whatsoever. Partly, in my opinion, the situation boiled out of control because there was no intervention from him. Kurt Francis King complained that John Isidore is treating other employees better than Brett. He said Brett had an audiotape. He complained that John smokes in his work truck and around the entries to city offices. He says John is aware he is sensitive to smoke. And I've been in the room many a times, he's brought this up, union and everybody else, trying to get people to close the water plant doors while smoking. So underneath my name, it says Brett Rukhousen. He says, "I listened to the audiotape," I guess this is in the words of John Huddle. He says, "I listened to the audiotape. Kurt accused John Isidore of lying about his work experience. Claimed Isidore's work experience was BS. He accused him of favoritism and stealing. Brett accused John of stealing a skill saw. Isidore said it was in his work truck. Brett went around the work truck, found the saw and said, 'What the F is this?' in an accusatory tone. Brett accused John of stealing his skill saw and John called me a mother effort and a lying cocksucker. The foul language was commenced by Brett and Kurt. The atmosphere's hostility was created by Brett and Kurt. This was done in front of another city worker." Now, the foul language, I did say some swear words, Kurt said BS, but nothing was ever mentioned about our supervisor using the words that he said. And then it goes on to the discussion about how to, under the rights of management to suspend, dismount, de- demote, discharge, basically disciplinary actions after that. And I will say that it was not our best day. We were all in the wrong on this. No, nobody was in 100% of the right during this whole situation. But the whole fact that it was written here as if me and Kurt were wild men, trapping our boss against his work truck was complete false. Let's see. Where this first page went? So I guess we can just play the video that Andrew Perry took. He was gonna present this as evidence and under context of these write-ups, you would, it would appear to anybody that watched this that we were just mad men waving our arms, you know, threatening John if you didn't have any of the words to go behind this. I will play this video first and then we'll get to the audio next. It should start playing, he'll back up his car. And he backed up his car in a way, it wasn't to catch the dash cam video. He backed up his car so his, his driver window would line up because he was sitting inside of his car with his cell phone up, recording the situation. Maybe just skip forward to where you see the car start moving backwards. Right there, yeah, play from that point. So you can see the frame is completely wrong. You can't even get a clear picture of the actual situation that's happening here, other than hand gestures. John is completely out of frame. And when you see Kurt throwing his hands up in the air, Kurt's actually saying, "Calm down, keep it down." And you could see I'm standing off to the side with my hands in my pockets. Kurt actually was moving back further. And this is where I found out he had the skill saw, I walked to the side of John's truck. He told me, "It's behind my seat, go get it." And I said, "What, now you have the skill saw in disbelief?" And said, "What the F is this?" And this is where I'm walking off. John, well, you'll see him shortly following me as he keeps on yelling as I'm exiting the situation. For so, so for somebody that felt trapped against his work truck going to follow an employee, that employee's walking away that he was once threatened by, seems completely fishy. As you can see, this is a horrible frame for any type of evidence besides us hand gesturing. Here I'm walking away, so is Kurt. And there's John still pointing. And then I entered my vehicle and left the situation. All right, now this is just all evidence. We're just displaying nothing but the facts here. We can go ahead and go to the audio and that's gonna start at 1 minute and 40 seconds.
This audio is from where?
Uh, this audio is from my cell phone. And this is the audio that basically goes over the whole situation. Yep, from here. Exactly where I am at, like freaking right after. He's at 2056, I'm at 2133. You didn't even give me my year raise, dude, you gave him a six month raise? I was like a year and a half into it. I had to fight tooth and nail to even get that printout. Pause it right there real quick. So him making that accusation, it's none of my business, none of your damn business. When I'm currently in union negotiations trying to discuss wages and this is a sheet of paper that I had to fight tooth and nail to even get within my possession to even disclose this or uncover any of this information. So go ahead and keep on playing the video.
It's a matter of public record.
It's, nobody, so it's just up, who's, who's it up to to put anyone at a different step? Because you never gave me my step raises.
I didn't give any damn raises, dude. I didn't give any damn raises.
I just don't get how Michael can show up and make 2056 and I've been here three years making 2133.
And he got a step increase because he made it one year.
Eighteen, then he should have been at 1912, 19, I mean, dude, I can do better than this, I can.
Then do it, Brett, goddammit, do it. Please, please, it's not one aggravation, man. We should have gotten the fuck out of here since you got here. We brought you food, we gave you money.
I busted my ass for you.
Everybody did, Wade did, everybody's done everything for you there.
Okay, a couple items out of the house, I do thank you guys.
Oh, I can tell.
Oh, man, you know what, you're way better at talking than me? But I, I know what your actions are, okay? I'm not an argument person, you're way better at the negotiations, you'll school me every time. But you know what, I, I, I know what's going on, John. You favoritism him, dude. Man, I'm just, I'm just done. Okay, for one.
Tell me how I favoritism anybody.
You know what, I'm just done.
I agree with him.
Okay, tell me, what am I favoritizing?
Okay, Michael.
Pause it right there. So at that stage, I was literally just ready to walk away. I didn't wanna keep going, I'm like, you know what, this isn't gonna be going anywhere good. Um, I said I was, I'm done, I don't wanna do this twice, I know what your actions are. And I was basically just gonna bow down and just move forward from there. Kurt walked in on that situation and Kurt said, "You know what? Yeah, I got you." Kurt basically had my back and started talking in that situation. But up into that point of through the whole wages, never did we show up to that situation yelling, screaming and cursing at John and waving our arms and hands right off the bat. It was calm until the point of the skill saw. But go ahead, keep playing.
Definitely coddle him. How's that? How's that? First of all, you think, how's that? First of all? You're absolutely, you're totally right, absolutely right, because this is what we're talking about later on.
Oh, yeah, we are.
Damn right we are. I, I have a meeting with, yes, we are.
That's awesome, he needs to be involved, dude.
Darn right, I'm getting ingredients involved, by the way. I, you're right, it is awesome.
Let's just keep it down.
We're gonna keep it down. Remember what I said, hostile work environment, this guy, he cuddles him. In perfect example, last night, by your own, your own admission, you told me that Wade went up there at midnight and pulled a board. That's what you said. You, Mr., hey, keep it, keep it calm, dude, remember?
I am keeping it calm.
You, as, as the boss, someone who allegedly worked 30 something years, bullshit, in the union, you're supposed to know the union contract, then why do you go against the contract? I have security, I was supposed to be called last night to go up there. Right, that's not what you said, just like, just like, just like yesterday when, when, when Michael was walking out, he did not hear you say, "Go ahead, go ahead and take the day off, no problem." But yet this morning, you told me that, that he called you, but you already knew that he was gonna take the day off.
I did, I absolutely knew.
That's not what you said this morning, you said that.
That's not what I said.
Okay, more lies, more lies. And then, and then last week, last week. I tried to tell him, say, "Dude, if you're gonna take off, go ahead and take it off, I got this." He goes, "Oh, no, I don't do that," because he already knew he was taking today off. So he didn't have to read meters. And then when I tried to talk to you about it in the morning, you immediately started raising your voice and cussing at me and telling me, I don't, you guys, dude.
Both of you attacked me the day that I walked in.
More lies, dude, more lies, you started yelling and cussing.
I called it out because I knew it was on purpose.
I called it out because I knew it was on purpose.
I called you all the time to the boss, and you said, go talk to whoever you want to. I'm the fucking boss! You're yelling. You just did that. Again, let's go take a polygraph test then, big mouth.
Absolutely.
You know everything. Let's go take a polygraph test.
90% of the goddamn drama here, dude.
Okay, let's, let's talk about lies, John.
Let's talk about you coming up screaming in my face on my job site in front of 50 people.
Over all the stolen stuff? Yeah, that's what I wanted.
Well, I depend.
You put the sawzall back in my truck. Somebody put the sawzall back in there, dude. I searched my shit and tow. What about, what about the skill saw? That was brand new, that was on the water plant.
You got it now?
The skill saw? You kidding me? Oh, fuck. What the fuck is this, dude? We've been looking for this stolen fucking thing forever. Dude, I can't even take this.
Eleven months.
Where's our air compressor? About the air compressor? You traded, you traded us some piece of shit that you had.
What are you talking about?
You took the double tank fast as long air compressor.
Oh, you fucking lying cocksucker.
Where is it?
It got stolen during the break-in, you fucking weirdo. High compressor I dusted shop.
When we caught you red-handed on two items.
You didn't catch me on anything, you shit my truck.
It's been gone for two fucking years. Where is it then?
It's been gone almost a year. Almost a year. I looked in your truck.
Okay, where's the sawzall? The sawzall comes up. Right after Tyree calls me.
The sawzall that you lost.
You put it back in my truck. Because Tyree was looking for it. Where's the battery?
You tell me you had it.
Oh, dude.
You're believing me?
If I wanted tools, bro, I would just go fucking buy them.
Oh, right, that's why you borrow them from me.
Yeah, that's why this shows up after a year in the back of your truck right now. How about the chainsaw sharpener then? Chainsaw sharpener. This appeared too. Are we still live here? So before even bringing any of this stuff in here, we all shook hands before these write-ups even happened. We said, man, that was a messed up situation. We can move past this. You know, we basically called it truce upon one another. Kurt fist bumped him. We had a conversation with each other saying, hey, let's not, not have that happen again. And we were going to move forward from this. And then these write-ups get slammed on both of me and Kurt, one after another, boom, 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 on multiple situations. And it has spiraled to this point. Even to the point of Kurt being currently suspended right now and doesn't even know why he's suspended from work. He's on paid leave for an investigation, and he has no idea why he's even on paid leave for an investigation.
I would just like to add that that's why I kind of wanted the video and the audio to go together. And I'm just curious why we didn't get the video from Andrew Perry from his phone? Because he had the perfect angle of the John's work truck and us. I mean, from his dash cam only, it doesn't show enough of the interaction, in my opinion.
So Brett, did you want to address either of the disciplinary actions any further, or any of the issues pertaining to that?
No, I just wanted to present the evidence at hand and let the people, let the citizens know that this wasn't just a one-sided thing. You know, this was multiple angles to this. And the accusations that we came up to him screaming, cursing, and threatening, and trapping our boss against his work truck was not true.
Kurt, would you like to address any, any of the details or make any comments?
He pretty much covered all of it, just disputing the facts as they were put down. And the fact that we thought we were moving forward past this when we were suddenly hit with, with all these.
Okay.
That was it.
Well, thank you. So I think we'll, we'll close here, and I would imagine there probably will be some questions. But just to reiterate, you know, I, I think listening to the, the tape and, I guess to a lesser extent, watching the video, you know, as you heard Brett say, and I'm sure Kurt would, would say the same thing, you know, this is, this was a bad day, but this is, the, they've never had a day like this. And the intent here is to not have a day like this going forward. And there, there is a, a desire to, to improve this working relationship within the department with John. With regard to the disciplinary actions, you know, we would ask the, in this appeal for the council to consider that this was within the span of hours, that prior to this, there was no disciplinary action for Brett or Kurt. And that, I guess in Kurt's case, he had received a warning the day before, for an incident of the day before. But still, you know, that opportunity to improve, and I think both of them would acknowledge that there, you know, there's a need for improvement here. But I think the, the totality of the discipline is a bit, you know, we're, we're, the way it was issued, the proximity of issuing these successive disciplines has not given them the ability to improve. And since these have, then since this incident, there's been no issues of this type for which they've received any discipline. So I think it may, you know, the intent here is for that to continue indefinitely. So, so thank you. I think we're, they would be open to any questions, comments, et cetera. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question, Corey?
Yeah.
You keep referencing the action taken is pretty strenuous, but isn't there other actions that in a, in an instance of disrespect or, or something that a, that a manager could just send someone home rather than giving the written warning? I mean, from that angle, isn't it like, just, you know, letting everyone know that, that there was an issue? Like, I don't, I mean, this will be in the file for a year, and it puts a placeholder in it for us as well, you know? Like, if we were to retract something like this, does that just leave it wide open when we know that we've had a schism or an issue before?
Well, you know, I, I guess to answer the second part of that, you know, the, you know, if, if there were a lesser disciplinary action, you know, for, for each of them, you know, around, around this event or events, you know, that would leave a placeholder, you know, such that they would be formally on notice of the need to improve and failure to improve or, you know, successive incidents like this, you know, would be a basis for, for progressive discipline.
So the foreman doesn't have, like, under the union rules, forgive me for not knowing better, but a, a foreman or a head of a department can't send someone home if they have a dispute or if there's, or, you know, an instance where they feel like, you know, people parting ways for the day or just separating.
That's, you know, that's a, that's a good, that's a good question, Mayor. I'm, I'm not going to pretend that I've come across that right off the top of my head. But, you know, it, I guess under a collective bargaining agreement, you know, I, I think if, if, you know, if, if, if it's something, I guess what I can answer is, you know, if, if there were a cardinal sin incident, you know, which is kind of a term of art in, in labor relations, you know, obvious stuff that you wouldn't think twice of getting fired for or something. That, that would be immediate or some, but for something lesser than, less than that, you know, if it, as you'll see in, in John's format, that in the public sector, there's, there's some kind of strange intersection of a property right with employment. There's, there's actually a notice of intent to discipline prior to actually taking the discipline. I don't know if sending someone home would be discipline. But I, I know what you're, you know, I, I know what you're talking about and, you know, I, I would be, you know, I, I think anything that would diffuse a situation, I, I wouldn't want to say, no, that's not possible. But I, I don't know, you know, that that is commonly used, but it may, may be possible. But I, I agree, you know, anything that might diffuse something like this, we don't want that to happen again. Ideally, we wouldn't have to get there.
How long's a verbal warning stay on the record?
The, my understanding of the contract, and I, I know the new CBAs were still finalizing and subject to ratification, but the current agreement allows for, I believe, discipline to be retained for up to two years.
It says two years.
24 months, yeah.
That's just hard. I don't know how freely we can talk about things.
Well, this was one incident, then Kurt has one before this incident, correct?
No. Do I get to talk?
On the 13th of September? I'm just trying to go over the facts that we have presented.
Oh, I see, okay.
Oh, all right, okay.
Oh, so, yeah, go ahead, Corey. Oh, I, I just wanted to clarify for the counselor that I did misspeak earlier. The, the reference that you're talking about, September 13th, that was the date which resulted in Kurt's written warning. So it was not the day before the 27th of September. It was a couple weeks, a couple weeks before, yeah. Yeah, you're right.
Should we go over that too? Should we go over that incident? Is that part of it or?
If Kurt would like to. Yeah, it's, it's totally up to him.
It's up to Kurt. It's up to the employees.
Well, I actually dispute the facts as they were written on that particular day. However, John and I actually shook hands after that day before I was given the written warning, hand delivered. And we both agreed that we both kind of lost our temper that day and try not to do it again. That's all I have for that.
So Kurt, you're not at work right now?
No.
Is there, have you been given a time that you're supposed to go back to work or date?
No, no, that's a totally different subject.
We're not talking about that.
That we're not talking about that at all. In this session, it's, it's a different subject. It's a different instance. We don't have findings. We don't have anything yet, so. We're just getting the information. John, if you'd like to add anything other than what you've written down, now would be the time. Oh, no, wait, I might be wrong.
I think this is the time for the city to receive the information from the employees.
Okay, I was wrong then, so.
Sure, that's not right. Okay.
Well, if you would like.
I, I do have, I, I have one question for Corey. So Corey, Article Four, grievance procedure, correct?
Yes.
You guys skipped step one, which Nolan voids these grievances. Sorry. You had seven days to employ with or without union representation was to address the grievance with me. That step was skipped. You moved to John Huddle. I'm sorry. That's the truth of it.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. Actually, John's disciplinary letters of the notice of intent to, let's see, notice of decision in each of the four disciplinary actions under right to grieve. He wrote, you have the right to grieve this discipline under the CBA Article Five, Section Three, which is common counsel. So that's what we did.
You got to follow the steps of the grievance procedure. We followed the steps for progressive discipline. Doesn't give you the right to skip the steps of the grievance procedure.
This is from the city administrator.
Doesn't matter. You know the rules. Rules are, could have been solved in my office. And here we are bashing each other, and I could dispute pretty much everything that both these guys said. I'm not going to do it. My letter, my statement that was written, I stand by it, and I stand by Mr. Huddles'. We did the investigation. Mr. Huddle did an investigation, and I agree to it and stand by it.
We're just done. We got the information.
All right, well, thank you all.
Sure. Oh, you know, I'll mention in passing that this is, this is the second time I've been involved in a step three appeal to the common counsel, the first time not too many weeks ago. There was, as, you know, there was a flurry of discipline recently. John Huddle's an attorney. You know, I don't know if it makes a lot of sense for us to appeal to an immediate supervisor after the city administrator goes through this process and explicitly tells us to appeal to the common counsel. So we, our, our position is this timely grievance, grievances.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
So you have other issues to go into an executive session?
We do.
Okay, so go into your next executive session.
Okay, and now we're going to move into.
Your closed executive session.
A closed executive session, so I would ask.
Sue it too.
No, that's not the right one.
Oh, it isn't? Uh-oh.
On the back of an agenda page. Got it. This is.
We're taking a break, Brett?
Now we're going into another executive session.
Everyone else had to leave.
I literally took it off the back.
I don't think you need to, John. No.
Well, but the microphones are on and recording and everything else.
Executive session has not been formally called yet, so the reporting is still going.
I'll talk to you.
Thank you, John.
From the city standpoint, thank you. Have a good night, John. That's everything you do.
Yeah, everybody's going out. We're getting serious now, Brett. I found it. Okay. Now that my filing is in order, I would entertain a motion to enter executive session under ORS 192660F to consider information or records that are exempted by law from public inspection.
So moved.
All right, I'll call for the vote. Is Tim and Ann still there?
Yep, we're here. Or I'm here.
So we got to get everybody else out of this meeting. So we'll be working on that. We can go ahead and do the motion right now.
Wait, Carrie to get back.
She's not going to swing the vote, is she?
Are we on?
No, not yet. I can stop the audio from going out if y'all want me to.
Not yet. I want to get everybody out of there so that Shayla can say what she needs to say. It'll be locky-locky.
I'm not invited, so I'm good to go, yes?
You are good to go. I'll tell you what time to.
All right, thank you very much. All right.
Ross is there.
It's just the City of Port Orford and Valises and.